Regular meeting of the mayor and city council, city of Port Allen, Louisiana, Wednesday, October 8, 2025, 5:30 PM. Each person must decide before entering the chamber which agenda item they wish to comment on. If they are not seated in the chamber when the agenda item is heard, they will be notified by an officer to enter the council chamber to address that agenda item. Agenda, please silence all electronic devices. Called to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of which stands our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph, here.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Hubble.
Here.
Sking.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Yep, go on ma'am.
Hey, for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 10th, 2025.
I'll make that motion. Should I flip them in?
Hey, it was motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Joseph. Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph, yes. Ms. Gordon.
Yeah.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Hubble.
Yes.
Sking.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And approval of the number five, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of September 23rd, 2025.
You have the motion.
Sir.
It's motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Payne. Roll call please.
Ms. Joseph, yes. Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Hubble.
Yes.
Sking.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And six. Public comments, comments from the public are allowed in accordance with the LA revised statute 4211, section two through thirty-four, and specifically limited to an agenda item to be considered during the meeting. Three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. No one signed in. Hey, number seven. Presentation of the Citizen Service Award. Um, so I came up with this, um, because, um, I was called out, um, to the fire, the home of our chief Dunn, uh, from Baker, uh, his family home that caught a fire. And, uh, Mr. Hamp, who we had to, uh, try to hold this secret from, um, just was out there and he did all he could do to help save, um, what they could. Uh, didn't burn to the ground, but I know the memories that they have will last a lifetime. But, uh, he made sure that, um, you know, the brother was out safely and that he, uh, started assisting before the fire department arrived. So, um, I've been knowing Mr. Hamp for, for years. As a little girl, I stayed there at their home plenty of times. Um, so I just thought this was fitting and so we asked, uh, Chief Dunn and his family to come to support him and surprise him. So we want to give him this citizenship award from myself and the council. Chief Dunn, you want to come up and say something?
The rule is maybe don't give me the mic because I talk too much. Look, first of all, that was, uh, that was a, gave me a good feeling to get a phone call and he was being recognized. But, um, you know, Thirteenth Street is just a one block street in Port Allen, the town. Born, raised and grew up on. And for Hamp to be the type of neighbor that I grew up with. Now, Lemon and Fay has always been a big sister because she's a company as older than me. But Lemon and Baker, and knowing that those two were next door to my mother and father, they were always like an additional two children that my parents had. And I knew anything that I needed, anything they needed, Mr. Hamp, that's just the type of neighbor he is. So I wasn't surprised that he tried to put the fire out by himself. But that's what type of person he is. But I just want y'all to know, you know, I've only moved a couple of times. I moved from Port Allen to, um, Baton Rouge in eighty-five and I moved to Baker in eighty-eight. I stayed in Baton Rouge, uh, three years and, but to have, like you say, the memories I have of not only that house, but every wonderful neighbor that had to help babysit us 'til my mom started working with my baby brother got out of diapers. She said she was going to work, but dad didn't want her to. But for Hamp to keep the tradition of being that neighbor, that's always one phone call away. It always gave me comfort to have a wonderful person, a brave person, the way he is. Now, I do call him from time to time to do stuff with him. But I just want y'all to know, y'all, this is what we all want, especially as elected officials. If we can get our citizens to support each other for good things and always be our brothers keeper, that makes the world so much a better place. And thank y'all for giving me a minute and y'all time.
So it reads, City of Port Allen, Mayor and the City Council, City of Port Allen would like to recognize Hampton Fred on this eighth day of October, 2025, in recognition of going above and beyond in a neighborly way of being a special citizen to serve the community.
I think I'll come up there and... Oh, you're gonna come up here to me and come down? All right, for, for those that don't know me, I'm a, I'm a neighborhood person that'll do anything for anybody in here. So now that y'all know my name, if you need me for anything, I'll just come over to the hall and I'll be coming to you later. Thank y'all. Thank you, Chief Dunn.
Hey Emily, come up real quick and take a picture after we take a picture with the council.
Dionne, you want to get in the picture? I'll take the picture. That's not me freaking.
We have one more, she wants a picture. All right, thank y'all. Thank y'all. Okay, number eight, presentation by Parish President Jason Manola on the upcoming drainage renewal.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how I follow that up though. Mr. Craig, don't go anywhere because I'm gonna get your number because you said you were about to help anybody with this.
I have his number.
Actually, I've also got Chief Administration here, uh, Mr. Philip Bergman, who's actually one of my classmates of Mr. Craig, so... But just want to talk a little bit about our drainage tax renewal. Uh, as most of you know, we actually had this on the previous ballot. Uh, that was a ballot that had many amendments on it in the past, uh, state amendments. And, uh, it, the renewal was at the bottom on last force amendments. Well, it got, it got rejected, um, uh, at that time. Uh, but look, we're not here to make any excuses why it did not pass last time. We take ownership, we take responsibility. We did not do a good enough job. When I say we, I did not do a good enough job of actually educating and put that information out there to our voters of what this tri- what this tax means to our citizens of West Baton Rouge Parish. It's a ten-year renewal. Uh, this tax, drainage tax actually started in nineteen eighty-five. So it's been going on since nineteen eighty-five and a ten-year renewal, uh, every ten years. It's seven point two mils, uh, is the tax. And it generates about six million dollars for our drainage department. And also just to let you know, this is a dedicated tax to the drainage department. Those dollars can't be spent on anything else besides drainage. Uh, it can only be spent on salaries in our drainage department, equipment in our drainage department, any materials, coves, things along those lines. So it's, it's very critical. It is the only funding source of our drainage department. So, uh, you know, if this tax would fail and then not pass, the only other avenue that we would have would be to potentially go to our general fund. And when you go to the general fund, um, because you gotta have some sort of drainage, uh, for the, for the parish. You can't just say we're not doing drainage in West Baton Rouge Parish. So if we have to go to our general fund, it impacts all other areas of parish government. It's not just the drainage that would be affected. Um, again, like I said, this is a renewal. This is not a new tax. It's like I said, it's been on the books since nineteen eighty-five. We maintain about seven hundred miles of, of ditches and canals throughout our parish, uh, with this drainage tax. And it also used to help strengthen infrastructure, you know, safeguard homes, safeguard businesses, and also any critical facilities or infrastructure that we have. Um, one other thing I want to, want to note, I want you guys to remember is that just this year alone, that our council voted to roll back five point seven five mils. So, um, you know, we are very cognizant of the milage and the taxes that our taxpayers, uh, pay to support the functions of our parish government. And we will continue to look at that. Any opportunities that we get to roll back milages, we will, we will do that, we will look at it. But again, this is super critical for us, uh, based on the, on, like I said, the amount of miles of water waste. And we're constantly looking at ways that we can improve our infrastructure, improve our, our systems. But also all municipalities, we, uh, we work with them, City of Port Allen, Town of Really, Town of Anis. Um, you know, we, we, our main responsibility is to help all ditches, uh, that, that controls the cities. But anytime there's an issue inside the ci- any of the cities or towns, uh, we'll lend our assistance. If, if the mayor asks for us to assist in any type of way, it just makes more sense to us because don't, we don't think that each municipality should bear the cost of having, uh, uh, you know, huge pieces of equipment and things along that. It just makes more sense if we assist, uh, it's more feasible, uh, for those folks. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Philip Bergman. He'll just talk about a few little projects just within the municipality that we've, we've had recently.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, I kind of stole my thunder a little bit because what I was just off with is, yes, the main purpose of this tax is to, to move water away from municipalities in, in the parish and get everything as fast as we can to the end coastal. And I think we do a fine job with that. We may, like Jason said, we may take seven hundred miles of canals. So, uh, with, with that, the importance being outside of city limits, it doesn't mean that we, we're not focused on helping you guys inside of city limits. And some of the projects that we have helped with that passes, installing the coves. I don't know if y'all remember this, we're from Melissa Street and, uh, I think it's Key Largo, uh, those big double lines that we installed in there. Uh, we, we pulled up some coves along Rosedale Road because there was some flooding issues along Rosedale Road by the old high school. And there was some undersized coves that we pulled out in there. We dug, uh, we, we coves on the service road, I think last year for the city of Port Allen on both sides because they had some crushed coves right there. We changed coves out on Michigan. Um, if you ever need assistance with blowing out coves. And y'all had younger, y'all had young new equipment right there. It's a, it's a fine piece of equipment that you can get with a cove cleaner and blow out coves. So, you know, we just dug the, the Port Allen Canal, which I think goes from LA One to Fourteenth Street. So anytime the cities need our assistance, we will be there for you. But at the end of the day, our main purpose is to move the water away from the cities. And that's all we wanted to get to emphasize with you guys is the importance of this tax and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Yeah, and I have one picture that I'll pass around if, if I may approach it. And I'll leave with, right here with the chief on his desk, if that's okay? Anybody that's willing to, that would like, would like a copy?
Yeah, I just want to say, I did them already.
Like that?
Yeah, we have them. I just want to say, uh, I appreciate the working relationship that we have, um, you know, not just with the drainage, but with other projects we have, uh, because we just did finish the road patches that we have, uh, done. Eighth Street, um, I think by the Donut, Eighth Avenue A, um, by the courthouse with Michigan, I think. Um, and so we do appreciate y'all, we paid for the asphalt, but you sent the equipment and some help for our guys at, in DPW, so I do appreciate that.
Yeah, anything, anything we can do like that to assist, like I said, to save the town and basically all our taxpayers' dollars, we're willing.
Thank you.
But thank y'all, appreciate y'all's support.
Yeah, any questions? Any questions? Number nine, presentation by Superintendent Chandler Smith on the upcoming school board tax renewal.
Sam, thank you, Mayor. I apologize.
I see. Yesterday you were starting to...
I know. It's working with kids. Apologize. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for allowing me to come tonight. Uh, just, I'm gonna be brief. Um, picture, this is what we, what we do. We work with kids and we serve, um, the parish of West Baton Rouge, uh, with our schools. Uh, we have two tax, uh, renewals, uh, renewals with a capital R, huh, on the ballot for November fifteenth, uh, as well, uh, with the parish, uh, and our libraries, and I believe on here for, uh, Port Allen. Um, so on that ballot, we have two twelve mil renewals. Um, both generate together about nineteen million dollars for us. All of that, a hundred percent is dedicated to salaries and benefits for all of our staff. Uh, the first one was put in in two thousand and seven. Second one came into effect in two thousand and seventeen. So they happen to just line up together, uh, for that ten-year renewal. So these will just renew again in two thousand and twenty-seven. So we're trying to get a little ahead of it. Um, and before I go further, I want to thank my board member, Mr. Blue LeBlanc, being here today, and, uh, my finance director, Richard Jared Gibbs. So both these taxes, uh, generate, uh, twenty-five percent of our budget, uh, twenty-five percent of our total budget. So we really, we really use these funds, um, you know, to further the cause of public education here in West Baton Rouge. How do we use these dollars? So a hundred percent of this is salaries and benefits, a hundred percent. Um, right now, in, in our region, West Baton Rouge, we stack up pretty well. Uh, we compete, um, for, for teachers daily. Uh, you know, that bridge is our biggest obstacle. Um, we're happy to say that over half of our four hundred and twenty-eight teachers live in West Baton Rouge. Uh, but we, we don't have enough that, that live here and we have to attract from outside of our district. Um, our biggest competitor in salaries just increased their, their salary to sixty-two hundred, uh, dollars more than what we, what we pay a starting teacher. Our biggest competitor in salaries just increased their salary to sixty-two hundred dollars more than what we pay a starting teacher. So we are trying to compete for those same people. What we're doing is just to try to remain competitive and keep our salaries where they are. And we start a teacher at fifty-six thousand dollars for that first year, which is a good pay. All right, go on. How do we stack up in comparison to mileage in school districts? Well, in our region, we're about middle of the pack. Zachary, of course, City of Sixty-seven Mil, Ascension, sixty-one, Central, sixty, Irville, fifty-seven. They just renewed some taxes to remain there. If you look at the top three, those are all top performing districts in the state of Louisiana. It does cost to be the best. It does cost to be the best. And I'm happy to say, West Baton Rouge community members have invested in our school system. So we just ask you to continue to invest in our school system so that we can remain where we are in the state. So speaking of that, where are we? So in the state, out of sixty-nine districts, I'm happy to report, we're number twenty-two. We've increased our district performance score in the last year to number twenty-two in the state out of sixty-nine districts, moving from twenty-nine to twenty-two. We're going to continue that raise. We've increased in mastery and advanced on the leap assessments the last three years. We've also shown tremendous growth in reading and literacy. So we moved fifty-seven percent to sixty-eight percent in our kindergarten through third grade students, performing proficient or above on that literacy. Y'all know that's the foundation of everything. Kids have got to learn to read. So we measure that, and that's now going into our new accountability system. So we're going to keep pushing there. So what happens if these don't pass? Well, I don't like to focus on that, but I'll tell you, it would be detrimental. A reduction in force would be possible, increasing classroom sizes to thirty-three, the state max. We're nowhere near that right now in our classes. We usually keep our class sizes about twenty to twenty-three. So we would have to increase that class size to the max, and there would be a reduction in force, so we would lose personnel. So I just ask for your vote. I ask you to vote November fifteenth. If you can vote, early voting, that's November first through the eighth. We have those two locations. We ask for your support. We're going to continue making you proud of West Baton Rouge and servicing and supporting the families in our community here. So thank you so much for allowing me to come speak.
Any questions?
I just want to make a comment. Do you think we would ever be number one in the salary?
Well, let's get this one done first.
Well, I know at one time, we was the lowest one in the district for teacher salaries, so this is a big step up. So I guess we can keep traveling up to attract better teachers, you know, to come into our neighborhood.
Last year, our board, we did a four percent pay raise last year, which was about two thousand dollars on average for the teachers. And that was to keep us number two in our region. I'm going to keep pushing to get us there. More industry helps as I test roll off sales tax and all that, so that does help us, allow us to do that. We also, just one last thing, I'm excited to say that two and a half years ago, our board created a building fund. We have almost, we'll have twelve million dollars in that building fund by the end of this calendar year. So that allows us to do the projects at Con, that allows us to do the football fields, that allows us to build a new Port Allen High Fieldhouse, a new Lukeville Gym, without going to the voters and asking for another tax. So we're able to do all of that, keeping your tax dollars the same. So I'm proud of our board for doing that. We use your tax dollars wisely, and we don't ask for more than we need. So thank you all so much for letting me come speak tonight. Thank you.
Hey, number ten, consider introduction of an ordinance to modify certain zoning requirements for the downtown mixed-use district.
Good evening, Council. Just a reminder from last week's committee meeting, this is the introduction of a ordinance modification that's going to modify some of the requirements in the DMU. The modified ordinance, which I gave a copy to everyone last week, if it's approved at next month's council meeting, this is going to allow constituents who own lots within the DMU that have two or more, yeah, two or more single-family detached dwelling on that lot that existed prior to twenty sixteen, this will allow them to go through the process of requesting that it be subdivided. Right now, the way the ordinance is written, owners of lots that have those types of dwellings on them, they cannot even go to planning is only to request that the property be subdivided. And so that's kind of an overview of what the ordinance, what the modification would be for this ordinance. And so tonight, what is before you is to approve the introduction of that ordinance. And then if it is approved tonight, then the public, the ads and everything, and then at next month's meeting, you will be asked to, maybe try to vote on whether that ordinance will be modified or amended. So are there any questions? All right. So if we could, yeah, is there a motion to introduce the, or this is a motion to introduce the ordinance?
There's a motion by Councilwoman Hubble, second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman King. Roll call.
Ms. Joseph. Ms. Gordon.
No.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Payne. Motion passed.
Eleven, consider approving a service agreement to tie barter, fire, and safety for the Port Allen Municipal Building for the inspection inspection in the amount of four hundred and sixty dollars.
Council, this is a contract, and so we'll have to bring all contracts to the council. Of course, it's four hundred and sixty dollars, and it's for our building inspection. I think the mayor might be passing any court records I have. Mr. DeGale is not here today. He's at a conference. But it's basically the normal contract that you sign.
Just giving me authorization.
Gives the authorization to sign a contract. Make it a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Hubble, second by Councilwoman Gordon. Roll call, please.
Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Well, give you some time. Consider authorizing Chief Mitchell to hire Eric Ronnicky in the police department. Chief.
First off, I'm believing in everybody, including Council. Last week, as y'all know, I explored to hire two people. However, one of them wasn't able to make it through to the matrix, but I do have Mr. Ronnicky here. Quick background on him, he started out for us back in two thousand sixteen as a reserve, and eventually he was hired on with us, still working for us for a little over a year. And he had, going to St. John and Big BRP, where he just recently left BRP, and he wanted to come over here. So I'm handing everything over to Eric, and get y'all more of Chris and I to supervise himself.
Welcome back. Welcome back.
Hi, guys. I'm Eric Ronnicky. I was fortunate, like you said, I volunteered here for almost two years before being hired full-time. I didn't make any money. I was a paramedic, a flight paramedic for Canadian ambulance, and area that life team at the time. God called me to be a police officer. I firmly believe that. Since I left Port Allen, I've been a member of a SWAT team, both as a medic and a negotiator. I'm able to take the compassion I learned in the medical field and translate it to being a police officer, and I think it's helped. It shows I have twenty-two letter commendation, four life-saving rewards, Medal of Valor, and EMS Medal of Honor. I responded in sixteen to the shooting events in Baton Rouge. It was a, you know, the metal on the chest does not bring those guys back. When Chief Mitchell said he was going to run for chief, I told him he was crazy. But we've consulted several times. He was actually my direct supervisor when I worked here, so he knows my work ethic, he knows my character, and he knows the values that I hold for the community. So with your blessing, I'd love to come back and, you know.
No place like home, huh?
As we have, so with y'all's blessing, like you said, I'd like to bring it back.
I'll make the motion. If he states it's, um...
Hey, there's a motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Hubble. Roll call, please.
Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to scoot out the way.
Ten thirteen, consider introducing an ordinance to increase the deposit fees for utilities. Council, I brought this to committee meeting, just knowing from dealing with the utility system, we get left with plenty bills, I'm sure, as well as the parish does. Especially the cold months, the deposits don't cover enough of the costs that residents leave and move somewhere. We don't know that they're gone. They don't call us to tell us that they have moved. So I'm asking, we have a copy of the ordinance, I think was passed out to each person, the new proposed of what we're asking. The residential water is seventy-five now. We're asking to move to a hundred. And same as commercial, because commercial water and residential was the same. So we're asking for the gas deposit for residential to move from one twenty-five to two hundred dollars, and for a commercial from two hundred dollars to three hundred dollars. And like I said, this is only because we get stuck with the bills on our books at the end of the year. So we're just asking to raise the deposits. Any questions?
I'll make the motion.
Hey, there's a motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Hubble. Roll call, please.
Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Payne. Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you. And same thing. Consider introducing an ordinance to increase reconnect fees for utilities. So currently, our reconnect fees are ten dollars. That gets no one's attention for cutoff. Our cutoff takes about two weeks to do, and they are probably about twelve to maybe more cages. And it is gas and water that our meter readers have to go out to turn off and on every month. So same thing, we're asking that we move the reconnect fees from ten dollars a meter to fifty dollars a meter.
Make the motions.
Yeah, anyone has any questions? I know I saw someone said that was a lot, so this is the time to discuss it. Has a motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman King. Roll call, please.
Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Payne. Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you. Fifteen, consider approving a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Louisiana compliance questionnaire required by the Louisiana Legislative Auditor and to provide for relative matters.
Okay, if it's included in your packet, this is something that has to be done yearly. And Mr. DeGale has already done the paperwork on it, information purposes, but the council still would have to approve the resolution to go ahead and process it as needed. If y'all have copies of it, they will email to you on Monday.
This is for them to, yeah, improve it?
Right, so that the auditors can come on in.
For correction?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion.
I'll make that motion, I think.
Motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Joseph. Roll call, please.
Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Sixteen, update on progress of resolving twenty twenty-three, twenty-four audit findings. I don't think it was the same.
Right, but you know, Mr. DeGale would require whatever items that needed to be improved or changed on our audit from last year. Every month, he has to report to the council exactly what has been done to correct all these items. And I thank everybody, once again, got a copy of it, emailed to you on Monday. And if you got any questions, we can try to answer them for you. But basically, we're just chugging along, taking care of everything that the auditors have pointed out, so that we can have as close to a good audit issue. Any questions?
Make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Joseph. Roll call, please.
Gordon, I mean, Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Presentation of the monthly financial report.
I think the last thing is just an update for informational purposes only that passes out every month. If anybody had any questions, you can probably have emailed it to me. Anybody's got it, it's a detailed copy of the complete budget balances and the percentage of amount of dollars that have been spent and what is left in the budget. And for us to see what was budgeted and what left to do.
He won't be back in the office Monday, so if you have any questions.
Yeah, you can say you have any. But if it's something that's pressing, we try to run it out there. That was my informational purposes only.
Motion by Councilwoman Hubble.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Gordon. Roll call, please.
All right. Ms. Joseph.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Eighteen, condemnation.
None this month.
Alcohol beverage permits. We didn't have any new either. Nineteen, announcements and correspondence. So the first, I guess, announcement that I have, it was put on the utility bills of the mistake that was caused, but it was still said that she, which is me, should have publicly said something. I thought reaching everyone on the utility bills would be the best way. We didn't try to hide it. I think in March of this year, March first billing, we discovered that the gas company that provides us, that we buy our gas from, gave us, sent the wrong volume statement to us. So when we calculated our rates, the gas rate was incorrect. So it wasn't discovered of how we bill for probably two months after. So once we corrected, once we figured out what was wrong, we had to consult with our computer company to see how to fix it. Well, it was, everyone would have to be out the system, and it takes about six hours to fix. Never a good time to shut down City Hall for a mistake. So we decided to wait until our hard close, which was September thir- So we decided to wait until our hard close, which was September thirtieth. So we did it right after we did drafts, so it wouldn't affect those people. And so we did it before the October first billing. So it was put on the bills that the gas rates were incorrect, incorrectly computed, I guess. And so I just wrote up a little statement. It says, due to incorrect numbers from our gas carrier, the gas rates were incorrect for the March first, twenty-twenty-five billing. It was discovered a couple of months later. Once it was discovered, we called our computer provider to see what the simplest fix would be. It required everyone to be out of the system, not working for up to six hours to complete. It was then decided that we will handle it before our close for the fiscal year. All bills from that time period were reversed, so you would see reversed on your bill and it was put back in and it left a balance. So that balance was put in the past due column. If you paid your bill, you are not penalized on the past due. It was because it was from March that it had to be put somewhere and they wanted to distinguish between the current bill and the past, you know, the previous bill. So that's why it said past due. So I said, you were not charged a penalty if you didn't already have a past due. If you're normally past due and on the list I was just talking about, then you were charged a late fee. But otherwise, you were not charged a late fee. This was put on the bills and remarks, trying to be transparent and reach every customer that we have in the city, commercial and residential. You are welcome to call and we will be glad to answer any further questions that you may have, Mayor Potam. So like I said, we weren't trying to hide anything. We thought the best way to reach everyone is not on Facebook. So we thought the best way to reach all of our customers were to put the bill, put on the bills. So please open your bills, anything we have, we put in the remarks on the bills. So it was put on the bills, tried to be transparent, so I wanted to publicly acknowledge that. Also, we found out today that at committee meeting, when I did the nuisance report, that we said an address that was a house from the corrected, the correct address. So I would like to publicly apologize again, because Mr. Caruso came in today, he was very upset. But I apologized to him today, but we publicized the wrong address. So I wanted to correct that as well. The address wasn't six twenty-two South Fourteenth Street, which was his address. The address that should have been publicized was six thirty South Fourteenth Street. So I do want to correct my wrongs. So the next thing, Port Allen High Council Walk is this Saturday, nine AM, register online. Also, the hazardous waste collection is on the twenty-fifth, we've discussed that. And I've had some calls today pouring in for volunteers to set up. But the Nightmare on Fourth Street is October twenty-sixth, is here at City Hall. We are still asking for participants and volunteers to set up their vehicles. You can call me or Ms. Winnett, and I want to tell Ms. Winnett, thank you for handling the flat situation for me. She took care of that for our citizenship award, so I appreciate her. And also, Shallow Baptist Church, nine fifty-seventh street, will have their annual breast cancer awareness health fair and walk at eight AM on October twenty-fifth. Also, you can donate blood, they are wearing pink that day in honor of breast cancer. Any other questions or concerns?
We had a full agenda, but we had tax renewals. And everybody didn't like to hear that, but they got to realize it's that big R, it's a renewal, it's not new. I want to thank Jason Phillips for all they do, because every time I call them and ask them for something, they never turn me down. And that's a good working relationship. Chandler, trying to get the numbers up, trying to get the people paid more, who can argue with that, you know? And I want to applaud our mayor for taking the initiative to raise these rates. Unfortunately, a lot of the public thinks there's a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow in everybody's budget. It's not. And that's a bold move, it's probably not going to be popular, but in the long run, she's being responsible for the tax creative money. I applaud her for that. And as far as making two mistakes. Two mistakes, I'm sorry, the only perfect person, I know that, I'm a crying type. So anyway, I just want to acknowledge what y'all did behind you on those renewals. You know, people, if we don't get it, they're going to be the first to complain about it, but you know how that goes. So anyway, that's my two cents.